Twenty twenty-four meeting of the St. Joseph County Council is now called to order. Please stand for the invocation, which will be given by Councilman Fig, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Blessed pray, our God and our heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We ask your blessings upon this meeting. I pray you give us wisdom on how we deal with matters of St. Joe County. We thank you so much for our lives and everything you've done for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
(inaudible). Subify, in the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Fig, for the invocation tonight. Next up is petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters.
Mr. Root.
Mr. Katanzarite.
I would like to make a motion that we reappoint to the Early Intervention Board Raphael Morton and John Ferretti.
Okay, we're on five, we're on four right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, any petitions, communications, or miscellaneous matters?
Mr. Root.
Ms. Drake.
I would like to make a motion now that we send Bill thirty-three twenty-four, the St. Joe County Farms Rezoning, back to committee. It is evident by those who showed up today and those who have showed up at St. Pius Thursday night that the public still has questions, and as their representatives, we owe it to the public to provide them the proper time to air their questions before a public hearing. Some of the concerns I have heard include water and utility questions, power use, and how that affects the grid, and noise which can be associated with data centers. Not taking those concerns seriously shouldn't be the way we do business in this county. So I am making this motion to send this item back to committee so that we can sure, be sure we are doing our due diligence in answering the public's questions before a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to send back to committee, Bill number thirty-three dash twenty-four. We will now open to discussion on the motion. Is there any council discussion on the motion?
Mr. Root.
Mr. Katanzarite.
I have a concern. I'll direct this to Mr. O'Brien. I thought under our rules, if we did not act on this bill within a certain amount of days, that it would automatically follow the Area Plan Commission vote. Can you speak to that, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Katanzarite. So this is one of the types of actions that the council has ninety days to act on. So either tabling or sending to committee for a month would not jeopardize that. But, good, good point.
Thank you.
Any further council discussion on the motion?
Is anyone here from Economic Development? I guess I'm just questioning if what this does, how this affects the project overall, if that would happen.
I'm sorry, I was trying to fit through the seats. Bill Shalillo, Economic Development. Your question was?
Oh, how would this affect the project if this, if that motion would carry?
So, my understanding is the, the timing from the sale perspective, potential sale perspective, is, is, is a fairly tight timeline. So the petitioners have asked that the action either be voted on and not tabled. So, either, either up or down tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Root.
Mr. Thomas.
Can I have a que, I have a question, Mr. Shalillo. So, if, if we table this tonight, what are you saying, what happens?
I, I would say if you, if you table this tonight, my understanding is the, the project would be, would be killed.[245.76][245.76](applause).
So...
We will not tolerate public outbursts tonight during the meeting. We will keep our decorum. Thank you.
So thirty days, they don't, thirty days isn't reasonable? I think thirty days is reasonable. I know you probably can't answer that, but the petitioner, is a petitioner here?
Yeah, Mr. Dance is, is walking across the room. I'll let him answer that question.
Thank you.
Mike Dance from Dance, Hunter and Associates, sixteen forty-three Commerce Drive here in South Bend.
Can you speak a little louder, sir?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mike Dance from Dance, Hunter and Associates, sixteen forty-three Commerce Drive here in South Bend. And the, the question is, is that if the council were to table this, what would happen is, is that, yes, we would, we would probably move on to a different side, is what would end up happening. So what we would ask for, for council, and that was the reason that we would hope at the public hearing, that we could answer the questions that council's been receiving on this particular development, to get that out, the public is here this evening, and will be able to answer any of their questions as well, that we would ask council to vote on this particular ordinance.
Mr. Root, can we ask him questions now?
Of who?
Mr. Dance.
We are in discussion on the motion. As long as it's pertinent to the motion, yes.
Do they have a timeline? Does, does the petitioner have a timeline on this?
If, if, if the council...
I'm still don't understand why thirty days is so critical. I, I just, the folks have questions, and it doesn't seem like they're getting answers to their questions. And that's, that's my biggest hang-up.
The, this evening, what we would hope to do is answer those questions that both the public has and also what council has, and to give council at least a, a comfort zone for approving the rezoning that we're requesting. We would answer all the questions that, about power and about traffic, all those particular issues, that also the public had brought up, water usage, the electrical grid, so we can answer those this evening. The, the petitioner, we've gone through, I think it was like four public hearings with this particular one. They've given me the direction, though, that if, if council didn't vote on this this evening, that they would move on. And so that's why I would request, when we get through the whole presentation portion of it, and with rebuttal, hopefully we will answer all the questions that need to be answered, that council could make a vote on this.
Mr. Root.
Ms. Drake.
Seems like this is not the first time that something has come before us and we're asked to make a decision, or we're going to blow the deal. This hasn't been properly vetted by the public. They showed up and they weren't allowed to ask their questions. It's our job to be their representatives, and if deals like this are so important, I would hope our Economic Development Office would work to answer those questions ahead of time, so we're not put in these positions.
Yeah, it, it, Mr. Dance, it sounds, I mean, here we are at the finish line, and now you tell us you're finally willing to answer questions. To me, that's a concern. These questions should have been addressed as they came up. They should have been addressed in the public information meeting last week. To sit here, literally, the night of the vote, and say, "Now we're ready to answer questions," doesn't sit well with me, sir.
I understand that completely. And at, at the, at the meeting last time, we were not the ones that ran that particular meeting. My job at that particular meeting, and I had mentioned that previously, was to get out the information that both that I had given to Area Plan Commission at the public hearing, and the information that was given at that particular one, and also at the Council Land Use Committee meeting, to make sure that the public had all the information that had been vetted at those public hearings. Since that point in time, there has been a website that the residents were able to put questions on.
When was that put up?
And, and also with council.
When was the website put up?
Friday morning.
Um, Friday morning.
When was it put up for the public?
Friday.
Friday.
I had somebody tell me it wasn't until yesterday.
The, the, yeah, the, the website's been up since Friday. Now, again, we did not have control of anything else on that particular part. That's why we also took the initiative to send council members the most frequently asked questions on this particular project, along with some answers.
Angela Smith with Dance, Hunter and Associates, sixteen forty-three Commerce Drive. The website was up Friday. We received no additional questions from that website, starting on Friday. There were some comments that were submitted, but no questions were submitted to the website between Friday and today.
Mr. Root.
Ms. Hess.
Uh, okay, uh, Mr. Dance? So when you say that they would move on, the client would likely move on, does that mean to a different location within the county, or to a different county, or?
I, I don't have the exact answer. When, when they say move on, that could mean go to a different county, or just go to different sites, is what they would end up doing. That's why, basically, they've just given me the direction that I request from council a, a vote this evening on, on the project. So, like I say, hopefully, we can get through that part of it. We may not make everybody happy. That does happen on rezonings and particular issues, but I think we can get the information out to them so that they understand it. I, I think they're here, obviously, and we can give them that information.
Any further council discussion on the motion? Mr. Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. Root. It seems like it's pretty definitive that the petitioner might move on after this. However, that, to me, is also speculative. The people who care about this in the community are here this evening. There's an opportunity for them to express their concerns to us at this meeting this evening. There's an opportunity for the petitioner or their representatives to answer or not answer those questions to our satisfaction this evening. And I'd hate to speculate on this not proceeding, when in fact, this could very well be on our agenda next meeting, and these fine folks would be right back out here again. So that's, that's my general concern about this.
We also don't know that we'd have any additional information beyond what could be presented tonight, within the next thirty days. So all the information we're prepared to present tonight at the public hearing, to answer all the questions as part of our due process, and we'll address those this evening, and then we'll, I, I just don't know that we'd have any other answers after these thirty days.
Thanks. But, but to Mr. President, that's either gonna meet our satisfaction, or it's not, for us to vote as representatives of our community.
Mr. Root.
Ms. Drake.
Something, somebody I would have liked to hear from is the Mishawaka Water Utilities, somebody from AEP. I think their expertise could have been helpful. I don't expect that they're here today.
I can provide those answers. I've had, I've had conversations, just to make sure, because I knew that when we saw some of the discussion that was happening with the emails, I have had conversations with the water usage. We do know about AEP right now, that they will be able to supply direct power to the substation for the data center, and that it will not have any effect on the residents in Harris Township, because it's on a completely different circuit. So yes, we can answer those questions. Mishawaka can provide water to the data center. They have told me that they have a comfort level for being able to do that. They're ready to do that. And I can certainly talk about the aquifer issue, if you'd like me to bring that up. We can discuss that issue as well, that there will not be an impact on the aquifer that the Harris Township residents are using presently for their homes.
How many miles do they have to pull the sewer from?
It, it's probably, depending on how the routing goes, maybe a mile, which is nothing when we're doing water and sewer. The routing basically just has to be done. It's gotta be engineered. That's nothing that can't be done. Mishawaka is already working to figure out what route would work best to get it to this particular site, and their, their usage, the size of the mains that Mishawaka has that would be extended, would be more than adequate to service this area.
Is there a cost associated that you know for sure? And do we know for sure that the company will pay for the entire cost of that?
Oh, no. The, the, the cost would not be on any resident in St. Joe County. The cost would be up to the developer to be able to do that. That's usually what happens, when either I work with a client and we go to a municipality for extension of services, that whoever is requesting that extension, they pay for those, basically, improvements. The only difference would ever happen is, is that if the municipality, for whatever reason, was extending those mains, and they said, "Well, you only need an eight-inch main. We'd like to extend to twelve. We will pay for that oversizing, but you still pay for the eight inches of whatever gets done." So that's usually how the development contract works with a municipality.
So Economic Development wouldn't have any cost associated with that? Any drawing, any?
Yeah, there's no, there's no taxpayer money going into this particular improvements.
But we don't have any idea of the cost?
Not, not for water and sewer right now, no. Our understanding is that the developer is willing to pay those costs.
But how does the developer know that they can pay the cost if they don't know the cost?
Well, they, they do some due diligence on everything, so there, there's usually, if someone were to ask me, "Okay, I'm gonna run the sewer and water a mile, and I'm gonna run a ten-inch line, or I'm gonna run a twelve-inch line," you can do an engineer's estimate on those, to figure out what you estimate those costs to be, and then you put a factor into that as well. So that, that's nothing that can't be handled. We do it all the time.
President Root.
Ms. Hess.
And Lou, what Councilwoman Tanner said, in that, I was also at that meeting last week, and I know all the questions weren't answered, and they certainly weren't answered in a meaningful way. I know some of the questions were, answers are embedded in the presentation, however, it wasn't clear as it could have been. But now we have a roomful of people, and we have people who can answer our questions. We have fact sheets put together. We're all trying to get this right, and so, and it was put at the end of our agenda for a reason, because there are a lot of people here, and we wanna make sure we have time to answer everyone's questions, and we don't want to make everyone else who's on the agenda tonight sit through all of this. So that's one reason it was put at the end of the agenda, to allow plenty of opportunity to get questions answered. So I don't know why we're answering questions now, when it's already on our agenda, to get questions answered later in the meeting.
President Root.
Mr. Schetzel.
I think we need to let these folks answer, ask their questions. Let's get this done.
Any other further council discussion?
Mr. Root.
Mr. Katanzarite.
So on behalf of the residents and the petitioner, I feel like, you know, the due process has taken place. The petitioner has met their end of the obligation on the technical side of things. I think it's too premature to simply table it before we've had a chance to even discuss it. With everybody that's assembled here tonight, I'd like to, I'd like to hear more. I just, I hate to see it table to committee. What, what happens if we get all of our questions answered, and the public hears the answers to the questions that they wanted to hear, or didn't want to hear, but we can make a more informed decision? We can still do the tabling motion later, if that's what, if that's what...
Personally, I have a problem with that. I don't think it's fair to the public to have the public hearing, and then delay the vote for thirty days, and then they don't have a chance to respond to things that change or new information that comes out. I have a real issue with not having a vote on the night you hold a public hearing, for the most part. I know the budget's set up that way by state law, but anything else, that bothers me, because in those thirty days, a lot could change, and the public doesn't have a chance to address it, they've already had their public hearing.
Well, at least we'd know what their, their concerns were, if we did decide to delay it. We would at least have their concerns known.
If we do delay it, the council always has the right to hold a special meeting, to invite representatives from Mishawaka Utilities, Mishawaka Water, AEP. I mean, no offense to Mr. Dance, but Mr. Dance has a vested and a fiduciary interest in this matter, and I learned a long time ago, some, you'll remember this, I got into it with one of our good attorneys here in the county, who had a fiduciary matter, and learned not to trust, and this is no offense, Mr. Dance, you, I've known you a long time. But I would have rather been able to directly ask my questions to the people at the utilities, at the water company, and things like that.
Well, and, and Mr. Chairman, I don't know, but I, I think there may be, I, I think Ken Prince was supposed to be here this evening as well.
I can't hear you, sir. I can't hear you, I can't hear you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought possibly Ken Prince may be here as well, from the city of Mishawaka, for this particular one, to speak in favor of this. So there may be questions that you could ask him in particular. Because obviously, he's on the board who works for the city of Mishawaka, so he would be familiar with this particular issue as well.
So you're saying Mr. Prince is, is here tonight?
He was gonna be here at the city.
Okay, all right, okay, I see him in the back.
The guy waving the hands.
Mr. Root.
Mr. Thomas.
I think the purpose of tabling this is to do exactly what we're talking about, of getting the Q and A, so the folks can get their, their questions answered. Nothing against you, Mr. Dance. I'm not, I'm serious, it's not. But they're not getting their answers, their questions answered. We're doing it here, and we're gonna do it again tonight, but that's the purpose of tabling this. The purpose, and I get what you're saying, Mr. Katanzarite, but the purpose of tabling this is so we can go through this a little more methodically. I don't think thirty days is unreasonable. I'm not against economic development. I'm not. But I don't think thirty days is unreasonable, and I can't imagine the petitioner think that's unreasonable. No.
Well, and like I said, I, I just wanna mention, usually when we go through the rezoning
process, this is the part where the public gets the input. We, no matter what the project is, I mean, I've been doing it for thirty-five years. Basically, I give the presentation. It gets open to the public, for those in favor, those against, so that they get a full chance to hear the answers, and they can always ask a question. Council always has the ability, if, if I, after I give my rebuttal for any kind of questions, if there's something else that council wants to ask, if there's a particular petition, you certainly can ask the, the public, "Okay, is there some other question that didn't get answered?" You have the ability to do that, and we can take care of that, hopefully, this evening, that I can get those answers out, that everybody's getting the same answer, so that there isn't a group that's just hearing rumors about a particular project. They're not getting the answers that they thought, and that's why we do this, is, is to just have that set of answers available for the public, so that they know what's happening, and that we can try to answer those.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm not putting you down again, though.
No, no.
But Friday was too late, in my opinion. Today's Tuesday, and that was put on the website Friday. That's too late. I think they needed more time. That's four days.
No.
And, and I just, again, I'm not, I'll take it personal, I think that should have been out a long time ago.
Mr. Dance, I've been here a long time, and you know as well as I do, that on controversial projects, there is almost always community meetings held with Q and As. Always. That did not happen in this case, to the satisfaction of some of us.
And I appreciate that. The, the, the meeting that happened on Thursday wasn't run the best, and, and that's the least that I can say for that particular one. I wish I would have been able to answer the questions that were there. That wasn't the format that was given to us, when I was invited to be at that particular meeting. So what we had hoped for would be that they would see the, basically, the, the main parts of the project, and that at this evening's meeting, if they had anything else that they would like to ask, they could do it at this particular venue, and that we could answer those particular questions for them.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Root. I just wanna make clear for everyone that the motion is to send the matter back to committee, and a couple of folks have referenced tabling. There's, there's a difference. Tabling means no council action or discussion till the next meeting, next public hearing, public meeting in June. Sending back to committee, which I think was what Mrs. Drake's motion was, go back to committee, I think maybe Mr. Fig's committee, and then at the committee meetings, further discussed, held in committee, sent back, favorable, unfavorable, or no recommendation. It may be a distinction without much of a difference here, but there's a distinction.
Any further council discussion on the motion? Mr. Katanzarite.
Isn't the recommendation already been made? It was sent without recommendation tonight? So we would not...
We were not to the main motion yet. This is a, this is a procedural motion.
I'm referring to Mr. O'Brien speaking at the committee. Wasn't there already a, a motion on this at committee?
Right, so this was sent from committee to the full council right now.
So that would not be changed out of committee, would it?
Well, could be. I mean, it goes back to committee.
Send it back.
Right.
If you send it back, it could be Drake.
Right, which is what Mrs. Drake's motion is, to send it back.
That'd be a first for us.
Any further council discussion? Mr. Schetzel.
Yeah, a lot of us have taken a lot of time to research different questions that have been emailed to us, different questions that were mentioned at the public meeting. These folks are here to ask their questions. I think we need to go ahead and follow the agenda. Defeat this motion, move forward.
Any further counsel, Ms. Hess?
Yeah, I would just like to agree with Councilman Schetzel. I believe that we are, you know, we have answers to some questions, and I think Mr. Dance just said that we, that we need an up or down vote tonight, one way or the other, it sounds like to me. So there's an opportunity to vote no later as well.
Are we ready to vote on the motion? No further discussion? Clark, will you please take the roll on the motion to send it back to committee?
Mr. Thomas?
What am I, now, Mr. O'Brien?
If you say yes, you're voting to send it back to committee.
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
No.
Mr. Morton?
No.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
No.
Mr. Katanzarite?
No.
Mr. Tanner?
No.
President Root?
Yes.
It fails. Yes, fails five, five-four.
Thank you. Let's record show that the motion to send back to committee was defeated by a vote of five to four. Is there any other petitions, communications, or miscellaneous matters? Hearing none, we will move to board appointments. Mr. Katanzarite.
Mr. Root, I'd make a motion that we reappoint to the Early Intervention Board Raphael Morton and John Ferretti. Also, the St. Joe County Housing Authority, Terry Buckmaster, Phil Buckmaster, Thomas England, and Pamela Tredway. To the MACOG Board, to take Mr. Root's place, after a long time on the MACOG Board, Brian Tanner. Also to the Northern Indiana Historical Society Board, Councilmember Diana Hess. To the On-Site Wastewater Advisory Board, Andy Place Jr. And to the Water Resources Advisory Board, Dr. Jerry Marley. Those are my motion for reappointments. Mr. Root.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzarite. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of these nominations, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Raphael Morton and John Ferretti are appointed to the Early Intervention Board. Terry Buckmaster, Phil Buckmaster, Thomas England, Pamela Tredway to the St. Joseph County Housing Authority. Brian Tanner to the MACOG Board. Diana Hess to the Northern Indiana Historical Society Board. Andy Place Jr. to the On-Site Wastewater Advisory Board. And Jerry Marley to the Water Resources Advisory Board. That concludes our board appointments for tonight. Next up is a report from the county auditor.
No report. President?
Report from any county commissioner?
No.
Any report from any special committee of the council?
Mr. Root.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Not on any special committee, but I would wanna mention that yesterday, the historic moment took place in Gary, Indiana, the South Shore Railroad Double-Tracking Project, which directly impacts our county. There was a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Gary Miller Station. Several dignitaries were in attendance, including Governor Holcomb, Senator Todd Young, Frank Mervan, the congressman from the First District, and our, our Second District Councilman Rudy Yakum, and, I don't know, every elected official from Lake County to St. Joe County, I think was there, state representative. But the important thing about it was, is that the double-tracking project is done now, and the former busing that was taking place for two years during the construction is now over, and the train ride from South Bend to Chicago now is thirty-two minutes less than it used to be, and there's more trains now coming to and from our airport to Chicago. So just, if anybody wants to take advantage of that, it's a great, it's a great thing to do, it's a great way to get to Chicago, kinda fancy-free. Also, you can now take your bike on all trains, year-round. There's no longer a limitation as to time of year, which there used to be. We gained three westbound and two eastbound express trains in South Bend. So those trains make limited stops. The trip there from South Bend to Chicago is only an hour and forty-nine minutes. It used to be two hours and fifteen minutes, and there is now extra weekday trains, one per day, for a trip that used to be two hours and thirty minutes, is now an hour and fifty-eight minutes. So I would just encourage the public to take advantage of that. Our county, everybody in this room, helped make that happen by making an investment in the double-tracking project. Even though it didn't physically take place in our county, it did benefit our county and has reduced the travel time and increased the frequency of service to South Bend from the South Shore. I think Commissioner Beckmeyer was there as well. He's, he's a board member. He was there as well, and can attest to that.
Any other council special committee? Hearing none, we'll move to first reading. Clark, will you please read our first bill?
Bill number forty-nine dash twenty-four, An Ordnance of the St. Joseph County Council Amending Title Fifteen, Chapter One Fifty-four, Land Usage of St. Joseph County Code to Address Legally Established Non-Conforming Uses in the Indiana Enterprise Center Overlay uses in the Indiana Enterprise Center Overlay District. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Area Plan Commission.
Bill number 49-24 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 50-24, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, land usage, Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 24400 Fillmore Road from C. Commercial District, final site plan specific, and R. Single Family District to R. Single Family District. Petitioner, Guadalupe Enrosa Arivo.
Bill number 50-24 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 51-24, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, land usage, Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 932 East McKinley Avenue from C. Commercial District and R. Single Family District to C. Commercial District. Petitioner, Dominic and Marita Cowrow, joint revocable trust.
Bill number 51-24 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 52-24, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, land usage, Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 30500 U.S. Highway, unaddressed 40-plus-or-minus-acre parcel abutting 30500 U.S. 20 Highway to the south and east, unaddressed 11-plus-or-minus-acre parcel abutting said 40-plus-or-minus-acre parcel to the west, and addressed 35-plus-or-minus-acre parcel abutting said 40-plus-or-minus-acre parcel to the east, from A. Agricultural District to I. Industrial District. Petitioner, Illinois Indiana Development Company, LLC.
Bill number 52-24 is assigned to the Land Use and Planning Committee.
Bill number 53-24, an ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by Illinois Indiana Development Company, LLC, in Chicago South Shore and South Bend Railroad to allow railroad switching and classification yard per section 154.319, property located at 30500 U.S. Highway, unaddressed 40-plus-or-minus-acre parcel abutting 30500 U.S. 20 Highway to the south and east, unaddressed 11-plus-or-minus-acre parcel abutting said 40-plus-or-minus-acre parcel to the west, unaddressed 35-plus-or-minus-acre parcel abutting said 40-plus-or-minus-acre parcel to the east, unaddressed 2-plus-or-minus-acre parcel abutting said 35-plus-or-minus-acre parcel to the east, 54231 Smile Axe Road, and 30100 U.S. 20 Highway. Petitioner, Illinois Indiana Development Company, LLC.
Bill number 53-24 is assigned to the Land Use and Planning Committee.
Bill number 54-24, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring a portion of the St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to IC 6-1.1-12.1. Petitioner, H.P. Old Cleveland Partners, LLC.
Bill number 54-24 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 55-24, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring a portion of St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to IC 6-1.1-12.1. Petitioner, LCI Services Corporation.
Bill number 55-24 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 56-24, an ordinance requiring A. 100-2 Apartments LP to make payments in lieu of taxes on Lot 1 of the proposed plot of Ahipa-100 Generations Drive Minor Subdivision, parcel number to be determined. Petitioner, A. 100-2 Apartments.
Bill number 56-24 is assigned to the Budget Administration Committee. And that concludes our first reading for tonight. Next up is salary amendments. Clerk, will you read our one and only salary amendment, please?
Bill number 37-24, an ordinance amending ordinance 107-23, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2024. Petitioner, Dukeham Center.
Committee report, please. Ms. Drake? She was not here, so I handled this one, I believe, and this one comes with a favorable recommendation. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, you have five minutes to address the council.
My name is Julie, excuse me, my name is Julie Lawson, 40161 Lethrop Street, regarding, requiring, or seeking to amend the salary for our financial coordinator from the 30-hour a week to a 40-hour a week full-time. The funds will not be coming out of any county money, it's still out of our grant or public or project income fund, so just wanting to amend the salary to full-time.
Any question from the council for the petitioner?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shetzel?
Could you explain, so the public knows why that increase is necessary?
Because the position was previously held by Randy Squadroni, and it was in a part-time capacity at only 30 hours a week, and Mr. Squadroni is retired, and we filled it with a full-time position, so what we've done is taken the position rate that he had at part-time, did the increase with the auditor's office on the 3% increase, and covered FICA and everything, just to get it to the new salary rate.
So there are more duties to make it full-time, or it's the same duties, or?
There are duties, but there are duties that we felt were a little neglected at only 30 hours a week. It needed to be a full-time position. Yes, sir.
Mr. Morton, you did say that those funds are being taken care of out of your project income?
Project income or grant money, yes, sir.
Either or?
Either or, correct.
Further counsel questions or discussion for the petitioner? Hearing none, we will move to public hearing on bill number 37-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on bill number 37-24 is closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, was made by Councilman Figgs, seconded by Councilman Morton. Any further counsel discussion on the bill? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanjari?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Bill passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that bill number 37-24 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our salary amendments for tonight. Next up is a public hearing, public comment on all fiscal matters before the county this month. All fiscal matters were heard and discussed by the council at its February, I'm sorry, April committee meeting, and so tonight we will move right into a public hearing on any of the items listed under bill number 48-24. So is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any item under 48-24? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak to any item under 48-24? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to any item under Anyone online? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed on bill number 48-24. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion for approval.
Second. Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Morton. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanjari?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Bill passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that bill number 48-24 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our fiscal matters for tonight. Next up is land use and planning. We have bill number 40-24.
Bill number 40-24, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring a portion of the St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to IC 6-1.1-12.1. Petitioner, H.P. Old Cleveland Partners, LLC.
Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, bill number 40-24 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner, please state your name and address, you have five minutes to address the council.
Terry O'Brien, Economic Development Planner. My office is in this building on the 11th floor. With your permission, I would like to present this petition and the next one, because it is one project. We just happen to have one petitioner for a real property tax abatement and one petitioner for a personal property tax abatement.
So, hold on just a minute here, so, just so the public's aware, so we will hear both these bills tonight, we will hold a combined public hearing on them since they are one of the same, and we will hold a separate vote on each item, okay? So on these next two, if you want to speak either in opposition or favor, there will be a combined public hearing. Go ahead, Mr. O'Brien.
Okay. H.P. Old Cleveland Partners is the Holiday Group, which is a very well-known company locally. LCI Services is Lippert Components, which is also a very well-known company. Holiday Properties is going to be the building owner, and they are going to be building a 600,000-square-foot building at a cost of approximately $40 million, and they are asking for a 10-year personal real property tax abatement. Their tenant, Lippert Components, will be signing a 10-year lease, they will be doing build-out of approximately $5 million. To tell you a little bit about Lippert, Lippert has two operations currently in St. Joseph County. They have a building on Sample Street, and they have it in South Bend, and a building on Burkett Street on Mishawaka. They employ approximately 500 people at those two facilities. It is not anticipated that any of the employees at those two locations will be transferring to the new operations. The new operations is located on Old Cleveland Road, and I have the petitioners from the Holiday Group, and I have Lippert here to provide you with a PowerPoint presentation and answer additional questions. One last thing, Lippert anticipates employing approximately 100 new employees at an average salary of $21 an hour. There will, the person, the management and office employees will make approximately $38 an hour. With that, I'd like to have Lippert and Holiday to come forward.
Before we do that, can I have the clerk, please, read bill 41-24 into the record?
Bill number 41-24, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring a portion of the St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to IC 6-1.1-12.1. Petitioner, LCI Services Corporation.
Go ahead, Fair. Thank you. Paul Fair with Holiday Properties, address is 3454 Douglas Road in South Bend. Thank you all very much for having us this evening. I am joined by Braxton Cave from Lippert Components, as well as Joe Salisbury from Lippert. Terry did a wonderful job explaining what we're here for tonight, and so I'll keep my comments brief. This is a project, ooh, I had a feeling this might happen. Can I get you to do it there? So I'll get started while we get that worked out. Ah, thank you. All right. So, as Terry mentioned, this is a project that's owned by H.P. Old Cleveland Partners, LLC, which is a Holiday Properties-controlled entity. We will be the developer and owner of the property, and we will have a long-term lease agreement with Lippert, or LCI Service Corp., a subsidiary of Lippert. The key piece that I want to mention on that is that Lippert, as the tenant in the building, will be responsible for all operating expenses. So granting a real property tax abatement means that that benefit flows directly through to Lippert, because they are responsible for payment of the taxes while they are in the building. So this is a real key economic part of the package to move this project forward. It's a critical element for them deciding to move forward with an investment of this nature. As Terry mentioned, again, this is a 52-acre site, we're on Old Cleveland Road, directly across from General Stamping and Metalworks, so about a mile to the west of U.S. 31, very near the exit 72 interchange of 8090, a very good logistics location. Building size is 606,000 square feet, it will be a precast concrete construction, so a very attractive building. We will have 20,000 square feet of office, and Braxton's going to talk a little bit more about the job creation here, but that is a significant number. I mean, when you look at it within a 600,000-square-foot building, it's a small percentage, but standing on its own, 20,000 square feet of office is, would be one of the larger office users in our community. There's 200 parking spaces planned for the project and 60 dock doors. Again, mentioned, there'll be 10 years, there are options to extend as well, so we certainly hope that Lippert will make this their home for a very long time. Construction costs about $40 million. And then, the last two things I want to point out before I hand it over to Braxton, is that today, we are paying about $1,600 in taxes on this site. So regardless of the abatement, we'll be paying significantly more taxes once this project is up and operating. And then again, something that is always a question that comes up, this will be built by Holiday Construction Group as the general contractor, they are headquartered in South Bend, they're a sister company of ours. We don't have all of our subcontractors identified yet, but the ones that we do have are identified for this project are all St. Joe County-based, so that, we'll make that a priority as we seek out our subcontractors. So I'm going to ask Braxton to step up and talk a, oh, yes.
Can you mention those contractors that you're committing to?
Sure, so we have, it's on the MEP side, so Elite Electric for electrician, Dynamic Mechanical for mechanical and plumbing, and Crop Fire Protection.
You say Elite Electric?
Yes.
Okay. Dynamic and Crop, thank you.
Yep.
And, Fair, how many additional subcontractors are you?
So there'll be, I don't know the exact number of how many subcontractors we'll have, but probably another 10 in addition to that.
Do you expect most of those tend to be local also?
I expect most of those tend to be local also. There'll be some that aren't, but the majority will be. Any further questions for me, or otherwise I'll ask Braxton to?
I'm going to ask a tax abatement question, you want me to have?
Sure.
Mr. O'Brien answer, or you?
Okay.
Can you explain to the public that's gathered here what a tax abatement is? They're generally more of a tax phase-in, because you're not really getting the tax abated completely.
Right. Yeah, and I guess one thing I'll point out?
Over the 10-year period, can you, because some people think an abatement's 100%?
Sure.
Until the thing ends.
Yeah, it's a phased approach, so we will be paying taxes over that period of time, and one thing to point out is it's only on the improvements, so the land is not abated. We will pay taxes in full on the land, the improvements are abated, and you're right, that is a phased approach, so it starts at 100% abatement just for the first year, but as you get into the second and beyond, then there are, that ultimately fades out until it's, yeah, a much less number as you get to the end of the abatement.
Because LCI is going to receive the benefit of this, are they going to file the annual statement of benefits form, or are you guys going to handle that?
We file, the building owner has to file that, but we'll do it in conjunction with information we received from them.
Thank you.
Yep.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Braxton Cave, 408 South Burkett Avenue. As we spoke on our last council meeting, this project here gives us a great opportunity to expand our operation in St. Joe County. As mentioned earlier, we have currently two locations, one in Mishawaka, one in South Bend. We are seeing significant growth in our aftermarket business at Lippert, and so this opportunity gives us a chance to put a stake in the ground for the long haul with our aftermarket business, creating new jobs, and then, most importantly, staying close to home where we want to be.
Any questions from the council for the petitioners?
I have a question.
Mr. Shetzel?
Thank you. You know, a lot of people are concerned about filling jobs, right? Because we're doing a lot of job creation, this commissioners, the commissioners we have now in this council. Do you have any concerns about filling those jobs?
Currently, I do not. If I look at our turnover rate and our ability to bring in talent right now in our two locations in St. Joe County, that's never been an issue for us, which is also another reason why we're looking forward to continuing to be in St. Joe County.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Thank you. We will now open to public hearing, a combined public hearing on bills 40-24 and 41-24. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of either bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to either bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing none, the public hearing on bill number 40-24 and 41-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on bill number 40-24?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve was made by Councilman Figgs, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further counsel discussion on the bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanjari?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Bill passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that bill number 40-24 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next up, may I have a motion on bill number 41-24?
Move to pass, favor. Second.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Morton, seconded by Mr. Shetzel. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanjari?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
And President Root?
Yes.
Bill passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let's record show that Bill number 41-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. Our next bill is 43-24?
Bill number 43-24, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, Land Usage Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at plus or minus 3.46 acres at 15546 State Road 23 Highway, from our single-family district to C Commercial District. Petitioners, Bharat Kumar Patel, Sr., and B. H. W. Chatal.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, Bill number 43-24 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening. This is Carl Brown-Grimm, Area Plan Commission staff. So, first, we have a rezoning off of State Road 23 for a proposed restaurant and retail plaza. It's currently zoned our single-family, but it's directly east of property zone, commercial business, and office buffer. Currently onsite, there's a single-family home that will be removed for the new retail plaza. Here we are, looking east on State Road 23 and west. This is a site plan provided by the petitioner, showing four suites within the commercial plaza, three of which are attached. Drive-throughs are planned for both buildings, the standalone and the attached 3-1. The plan also shows no development on the southern half of the property. Additionally, there is type-two landscape screening, providing a visual and noise barrier planned for the, both the east and west properties abutting residential. This should help preserve property values. The Area Plan Commission voted unanimously to send this to you with a favorable recommendation after finding the rezoning met all criteria. There was member, one member of the public who spoke in remonstrance of the petition, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council for area plan? Seeing none, petitioner, please come. Mr. Shetzel?
I know that, you know, we had, just had a new similar-type development, a little bit more like an L, go in right next door to that, so we have a little more traffic there. Do you anticipate any need to change traffic patterns with this addition to that area?
You know, I'm not really sure about traffic. That's, I guess, a question for either the engineer or the petitioner, but in general, State Road 23 has been going commercial in the recent years, so I think if that ever becomes a need, it would properly be looked at at that time.
Any further questions from the council? Petitioner, please state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Chris Goduski, Abbott Marsh Consultants. I represent Tim Schrock from Ancon Construction, who's the contractor, and he represents the landowner. The staff recommended a favorable recommendation, and thank you for that. I think the site plan kind of lays out what the development's going to be. It's going to be retail, adjacent to other retail, specifically about the drive. It'll be a minor commercial driveway that's reviewed and approved by NDOT, and most of that review is done and will be sufficient, as there's ample line of sight in each direction, even though it's accessing a very busy road. It will line up with Filbert, so it'll be the safest possible entrance and exit onto the road. Lighting, other development standards for well, septic, will follow whatever local and state regulations during the review process, so I could answer any specific questions you may have.
Any questions for the petitioner from the council? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill number 43-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Not seeing any hands. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Lori Drinkall, 15766 Arthur Street. I use Filbert in and out to leave and come from the subdivision. There's a lot of traffic right at Filbert and 23. The other commercial complex you were speaking about, tons of traffic from that. The people in Brendan Hills a lot of times come out Filbert, and I think that there'll be a huge traffic issue at that location, and I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, we are close to public hearing on Bill number 43-24. May I have a motion, please? Is there a motion on 43-24?
Motion to move favorably.
Second. Motion to approve was made by Mr. Shetzel, seconded by Mr. Tanner. Any further council discussion? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Figgs?
Yes.
And President Root?
Yes.
Bill passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let's record show that Bill number 43-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. Clerk, will you please read our next bill?
Bill number 44-24, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, Land Usage Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for properties located at 50430 Bittersweet Trail, 12349 State Road 23, and vacant plus or minus 6.79 acre parcel west of Anna Abudding, 12349 State Road 23, from C Commercial District and OB Office Buffer District to R-2 Residential District and C Commercial District. Petitioners, Sharon Bond, 2011 Revocable Trust, and Kevin Bond.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, Bill number 44-24 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Good evening. Carl Brown-Grimm again, Area Plan Commission staff, office on the 11th floor of this building. This proposal is to rezone the three highlighted partials shown here to allow for a new mixed-use development. The petitioner is looking to rezone the property to R2 Residential to the north to allow for medium-density housing, and then C Commercial District to the south to allow for new commercial construction. The properties are currently a mix of C Commercial District and OB Office Buffer today. Looking at the surrounding area, we have a single-family residential to the east and north with a more traditional residential development directly abutting to the north. Along the State Road 23 corridor, particularly to the south and east, it is primarily commercial and business. There are also industrial developments found to the southeast and southwest, northeast and southeast of the site. This is pictures of the site. It has frontage on both Bittersweet Trail and State Road 23, with accesses proposed from both rightaways. State Road 23 is a state corridor, pretty heavily commercialized, specifically west of the site. Here's the site plan submitted by the petitioner. Again, the north portion shows multiple attached single-family homes for a total of 34 dwelling units. These units will be for sale, and are planned to be similar in character and style to the townhomes developed by the developer nearby on Cherry Road, which received similar approval in 2018. The residential portion of the development also shows streets with 50 feet of right-of-way, as well as areas to retain the drainage of the site. Additionally, to the south, on the proposed commercial zoning, there are two buildings planned, labeled Restaurant and Strip Center. The proposal is proposed to be served by municipal sewer and then private wells, and all wells will need to meet all health department standards regarding that. The Area Plan Commission did vote to unanimously to send this to you with a favorable recommendation. As part of the combined hearing, a number of variances were granted to facilitate the development. There were two members of the public that spoke in remonstrance of the petition. One was concerned with the effect that the proposed housing may have on the property values of the abutting residential development to the north. However, the property today is currently zoned for commercial and office uses, and staff feels that if allowed to develop naturally, that may have a greater adverse impact on the neighborhood to the north than the residential that is proposed today. The other remonstrance was a fire representative who was advising the petitioner that an additional well may be needed onsite to help with any potential fire event, given the lack of municipal water. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you would have on this one.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we will move to public hearing on Bill 44-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Chris Goduski, Abbott Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're the petitioner, aren't you?
Yes.
Yes, I jumped ahead of myself here. Petitioner, you have five minutes to address the council.
Gotcha. Thank you. Same statement. Again, thank you for the positive staff recommendation. As you can see, the zoning originally went north and south with commercial on the west and office buffer on the east. This is going to be an east-west split with commercial on the south, kind of more in line with what's already following a west-to-east, you know, pattern of land use, and then an R2 on the north, which will be more compatible with the R1 uses to the north. There'll be 34 homes, two-story, with a garage, for sale, owner-occupied homes, not for rent. Century Custom Builders is the developer, Kevin Bond is the landowner. There will be a fire well onsite. There might be some combined private wells, you know, one per two dwellings, as, and we would follow any local, state, you know, federal regulations, NDOT permit for the access on 23. Those two are concept, concept-like site design for the commercial, but it would follow whatever the commercial standard, whatever the uses are permitted. Could be retail, restaurant-type uses, so whatever's consistent with that. There will be buffering to the north and from the commercial to the residential and private sewer, that, our public sewer, that's what would allow the density of this development. This is about twice the density of what the R1 uses, so it's not that much. It's only, instead of two homes per acre, it's about four homes per acre. So, it's very consistent with what's already in the area. I can answer any detailed questions you may have.
Mr. Shetzel?
Just a question about procedure. So, when NDOT gets a request for a permit, does NDOT do a traffic study to see how the traffic exiting and entering will affect that road?
We do that, and then NDOT reviews that work based on their standards of amount of traffic, line of sight, the type of drive you have to meet or construct, if it needs a turning lane or not. So, all those considerations are determined based on the specific development, and that's our, what we have to prove.
Okay. And so, would that also have happened, would that also have happened with the previous property that this young lady had a concern about traffic coming off of Filbert, but there also have been a NDOT permit required there as well?
Same, same exact approach. Yep. Yep. And that, that's maybe not at this point, it's in transition, but before you can construct the property, you would have to have a legitimate NDOT permit.
Thank you.
Any further council questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, now we'll move to public hearing on Bill number 44-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone online wish to speak in favor? Anyone in the room wish to speak in opposition? Anyone online wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing on Bill number 44-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Morton, seconded by Mr. Katanzerite. Any further council discussion on 44-24? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Figgs?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
And President Root?
Yes.
Bill passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let's record show that Bill number 44-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. Next up is 45-24?
Bill number 45-24, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, Land Usage Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for properties located at 17106 Cleveland Road and vacant lot abutting to the east at 17044 Cleveland Road, from our single-family district to O Office District. Petitioners, Christian Life Assembly of God Incorporated, DBA Journey Church.
Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, Bill number 45-24 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Carl Brown-Grimm, Area Plan Commission staff. So, this petition is to rezone a property that was previously a church from our single-family to O Office District to permit the reuse of the building as an autism therapy center. Properties located just to the south and east of the intersection of Hickory and Cleveland, across from two funeral homes. Otherwise, it is all single-family residential in the area. Here's the building to be reused. Likely no other improvements are planned for the site, surrounding area on Cleveland. This is a site plan submitted by the petitioner, again, showing no other improvements are planned for this site at the time. Area Plan Commission, again, forwards this to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation, finding all five criteria were met. There were no members of the public at the hearing that spoke in favor or in remonstrance of this petition, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, petitioner? Please state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the council.
Good evening again. Chris Goduski, Abbott Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend. I represent the broker, John Pericini, and the owner-operator, Joshua Smith, from the organization. As Carl mentioned, not much is going to change visually on the outside. A church, a former church, and then a parking lot will serve well for an office-type use serving clients, as the ample size of the lot and the building is sufficient. There will be, the woods will stay in the south and on the west side. If you see, even though it's all zoned R1 on the south, there's a body shop immediately to the west, even though it's a residential use, and then you have a retention area on the east, so it's kind of enclosed by two properties that would, this type of use would fit in well over there, to get good visibility on Cleveland Road as well. So, I can answer any detailed questions you may have.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner?
Mr. Root?
Ms. Drake?
Do you have any idea how many clients this will serve?
Joshua can answer that for you.
Thank you. Joshua Smith, Journey's Autism Center, 1316 West Dragoon Trail. It will serve up to 24 children, and will employ around 35 employees at that building.
What kind of hours would it have?
It's Monday through Friday, and the staff are there from 8:00 to 4:30, and the children are there from usually 8:30 to 4:00, depending on their schedule and their clinical needs.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Root? Can you talk about the traffic? We all know it's a very busy road, net location. Any special requirements in that, or?
It is a local road, but there is no anticipated changes with the drive. That drive is going to serve a similar use to what is going, what it's served in the past will serve currently what's in place. I do know county departments will review this in a plan review with engineering and planning and so forth for requirements, but I suspect not much would change.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill 45-24. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor in the room? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online? Public hearing on Bill number 45-24 is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Figgs, seconded by Councilman Katanzerite. Any further council discussion on this bill?
I have one more question.
Drake?
So, the age, you said it's children being served here?
That's correct. Our current center, we serve children from the ages from 2 to 21. This facility will be a little younger. It won't, it won't cap out at that age, so it'll be more in the 2 to 12, 12-year-old age group.
Thanks. Thanks.
Any further counsel discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Bill passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that bill number forty-five dash twenty-four was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next bill, please.
Bill number forty-six dash twenty-four, an ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by Kaminsky, Todd Kaminsky, and Tim Kaminsky, and Jill Otis, for property being located at five-six-one-eight-O Larison Boulevard. Petitioner, Todd Kaminsky, Tim Kaminsky, and Jill Otis.
Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Bill number forty-six dash twenty-four comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission staff, with offices on the eleventh floor of this building. This is a special use to allow a concrete batch plant on the parcel on the east side of Larison Road that's highlighted on the screen. This parcel is within the IEC core development area. This is how it appears currently from Larison. Then looking northwest across Larison, looking south on Larison. The parcel is located on an approved truck route, that being Larison Boulevard. From there, the concrete trucks would be able to access ongoing construction in the area, as well as ultimately US Twenty and State Road Two. Per the site plan, right now, they're proposing access on Larison Boulevard. Ultimately, there could be an access street provided at the north end of this parcel, which would also provide access to the property to the east. That's something that the county is currently looking into. However, as initially proposed, they would enter from Larison and then access the batch, and then there'd be storage areas to the north there. They are proposing a five-foot berm along Larison for screening, and it would provide, be provided with two evergreens per thirty feet of lot line. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, six-zero. This recommendation was subject to these written commitments, the first being that the developers shall adhere to a berm and vegetation screening plan approved by staff, as you saw in the site plan. Second, truck traffic related to the special use shall be limited to state routes and county roads designated as truck routes by the county engineer. Third, material extraction and mining shall be prohibited. And fourth, the concrete plant operation shall comply with all the performance standards contained in Section One Fifty-four oh-seven-three of the Saint Joseph County zoning ordinance. The petitioner is amenable to these commitments, so it's recommended that if you do approve the special use, that you make your motion subject to those written commitments. As I said, it comes to you with a favorable recommendation, six-zero, subject to the written commitments. I'm happy to answer any other questions, otherwise the petitioner is here.
Any questions from the council for Area Plan? Seeing none, petitioner? Please state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the council.
Good evening. I'm Brad Webb, Vice President of Kurt Concrete LLC, five-nine-zero-nine Nymphs Parkway, joined here with Jim Sellers, our operations manager. Sean mentioned the special use that we're requesting is for a concrete plant to service the unprecedented concrete demand in the immediate area here over the next several years. This is our third parcel that we have kind of gone through this process with. I feel it's most suitable, kind of reiterating what Sean said, but we land directly on a current truck route, close proximity to State Road Two, that would allow us to bring in material from that route. Really no residential dwellings in the immediate vicinity, fairly consistent with the uses in the industrial corridor. And several members of the community that were concerned with the first two parcels have voiced their support of this, so that's been encouraging. So happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on bill number forty-six dash twenty-four. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor in the room? Please come forward, sign in, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Dan Caruso, three-zero-five Compton Street, New Coral. I was one of the ones who objected to the first two locations. It was unsafe. I think a number of you also saw that it was an unsafe location. I am very happy, thank you, the Kaminskys and Ms. Oldhues for accommodating and providing the land for this location for the Kurt plant. Brad and Jim, I appreciate your patience, but it was just, the previous two locations were just wrong. And this is ideal, you don't, there's no safety, you're not out where school buses are, you're right in the production area. This is a perfect location. Thank you.
Don't forget to sign in, Mr. Caruso. Again, please come forward if you want to speak in favor. Sign in and state your name and address for the record. Three minutes to address the council.
Charlotte Wolf, two-one-four-three-nine Osborne Road, Lakeville. And I just want to commend the council for working with residents, trying to find the best location for things like this. As I've stated before, the overall project is not one that I approve of, but if you're going to do it, do it right with a lot of consideration, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Francis, five-four-one-seven-four Judea Lake Drive, Clay Township. I do want to also support this. I think that it's a good example of what happens when, in fact, you delay something for a while, when there is opposition from the public, as there was for the two sites previous to this. You work it out behind the scenes and with the public. The petitioners were very receptive to finding a new site. I think it's closer to the industrial activity that's out there. I think that's a good example, unfortunately, that you could have taken tonight as well, because there's a lot of opposition and questions about what's happening tonight. And I would encourage you to do that even at the end of this meeting, after you hear a lot of the hearing, because this is the kind of example of working with the public and coming out really with everyone participating in an acceptable solution. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Mary, I see your hand. Go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Mary Countryman, five-two-nine-five-nine Timothy Road, New Coral. I want to say exactly what the other speakers said, what Diane said, what Charlotte said, what Steve said. This is a great example of having a happy outcome for both parties, and it makes the difference in location, location, location. And some things are better suited for some places, and some are not suited as others are suited. But I do, I do want to say thank you to those who worked and made this possible, so it is in this, in the area it is in, and it was not allowed in the area that was previously proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, we are closed to the public hearing on bill number forty-six dash twenty-four. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Motion to approve was made by Mr. Thomas, seconded by Ms. Drake. Any further counsel discussion?
Is that subject to the written commitments? Thank you. Is that area plan? Oh, is that subject to the written commitments, the motion?
Mr. Thomas, you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I want to amend that motion.
To include?
To include the written commitments.
Ms. Drake?
I want a second.
On the property.
All right. We have a motion to pass it with the written commitments. Is there any further counsel discussion on the bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
And President Root?
Yes.
Bill passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that bill number forty-six dash twenty-four was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next up is thirty-three twenty-four. Clerk, please read the bill.
Bill number thirty-three dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title Fifteen Land Usage, Chapter One Fifty-four, Planning and Zoning of the Saint Joseph County Code as amended for property located at the one-hundred-eighty-plus-or-minus-acre portion of one-two-zero-zero-zero Cleveland Road to the west of Bittersweet Road, and the three-hundred-seventy-five-plus-or-minus-acre parcel west of the abutting one-two-zero-zero-zero Cleveland Road, one-two-five-zero-one Cleveland Road, and the seventeen-plus-or-minus-acre and thirty-nine-plus-or-minus-acre parcels east of and abutting one-two-five-zero-one Cleveland Road, and a portion of five-two-six-eight-two Current Road, and a portion of the one-hundred-eighty-plus-or-minus parcel abutting five-two-six-eight-two Current Road to the north, south, and east from A Agricultural District and PUD Planned Unit Development District to I Industrial District. Petitioner, Saint Joe Farm Limited Liability Company.
Committee report, please.
Yes. Mr. President, bill number thirty-three dash twenty-four comes to the full council with no recommendation.
Thank you. Area Plan?
This is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission staff. So this is a petition to rezone the highlighted area on the screen to I Industrial District. It's approximately nine-hundred-and-seven acres to the south of the Toll Road and west of Bittersweet on both sides of Cleveland Road. Currently on site, everything that's subject to the rezoning currently, it's a cultivated farm field. The structures with the frontage on Current Road, those are not subject to the rezoning to I Industrial. They're zoned planned unit development at the moment, and they're actually being placed on a separate lot in a subdivision. This is the property as viewed from Current looking east. Corner of Cleveland and Current looking northeast. Looking south to the portion of the property that is south of Cleveland Road. Bittersweet near the Toll Road looking southwest. Property south of Cleveland as viewed from Cleveland looking south. And then, when you get across Current, there is a farm and a home immediately across Current Road. To the east is the solar farm, which is, is owned by AEP. There's also a cultivated farm owned by the petitioner on that side of Bittersweet as well. When you look to the north of the property, north of the Toll Road, there are residential subdivisions there zoned our single-family. There are also some larger residential parcels, which are either used for agricultural purposes currently or undeveloped. Turning to the east across Bittersweet, as I mentioned, there's the solar farm. To the south are farm parcels. There's also two single-family homes to the south. However, these homes are set back approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty feet with frontage on Douglas Road. Then to the west is the Saint Joe Farm Planned Unit Development, which contains all those structures that are on the property, as I mentioned. And then further to the west across Current are agricultural parcels and that one single-family home zoned A Agricultural District. Per the site plan submitted, initial development is proposed at the northeast corner, just south of the Toll Road, just west of Bittersweet. They're showing three buildings with ground floors ranging from two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand square feet to six-hundred-and-two square feet. Additionally, further to the south, they're showing space for an electric substation and then also retention on the north side of Cleveland. And then to the south side of Cleveland, they're proposing an area for potential future development. At its height, what's proposed is for the employment of three-hundred employees. It's anticipated that most of the access would be via Cleveland Road, although they are showing one entrance from Bittersweet. In any case, all the entrances would be subject to county engineer approval. Additionally, a traffic study will be required to determine whether this development will generate traffic such that the developer will need to fund additional improvements within the street right-of-way. The site, the portion of Cleveland Road is a two-lane county road with an average daily traffic count of over twelve-thousand vehicles currently. In order to develop the site, would need utilities from the city of Mishawaka, both sewer and water service. This is, this extension is currently being planned. It's anticipated that sewer extension will provide a service area between Capitol Avenue to the west, Buckeye Road to the east, the Toll Road to the north, and then Douglas Road to the south. And that water would be provided via the new treatment plant on Veterans Parkway. Again, per the county engineer, development on this site would need to meet the county standards for drainage, and a traffic study will be required to determine the impact of the development. The petitioner proposed this set of written commitments, and the recommendation from the Area Plan Commission is now subject to those written commitments. So if you approve the rezoning, you will want to make it subject to this list of written commitments, at the very least. First of all, they're proposing to ban a number of more impactful uses, including slaughterhouses, CAFOs, confined feeding operations, sewage treatment plants, coal-burning power plants, nuclear power plants, mining, junkyards, scrap yards, scrappers, landfills, and then a number of listed heavier industrial uses, as well as off-premise signs. As mentioned, they're committing to a traffic impact study per the county engineer's requirements. A minimum two-hundred-foot green space buffer shall be placed along the Judea Creek. This is going to be measured one-hundred feet from the center line of Judea Creek on either side. They are showing that on the site plan. Without this written commitment, they would be required a county drain easement, measured seventy-five feet from the banks on either side. This will be wider than that requirement, and that really just requires them to not place any structures within the drainage easement. With this, they're really committing to providing landscaping that can potentially provide some filtration should any runoff reach the creek. Additionally, the property shall meet local, state, and federal requirements in regards to any wetlands, floodway, and floodway fringe. As you can see, there are special flood hazard areas. Primarily on the south side of Cleveland Road, along Judea Creek, there is a flood fringe that's immediately around the creek, that will probably be within the green buffer area that's being proposed. Nevertheless, any development within the special flood hazard area would need to meet the local floodplain regulations and be approved by the floodplain administrator. Any development within the flood fringe would have to be approved by the state. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission by a vote of six to two, again, subject to those written commitments. It was found that it advances several goals of the comprehensive plan, those being Goal Two, Objective A, ensuring that there are suitable areas for future industrial development. More specifically, Policy Six, which states that industrial uses shall have access to municipal water, wastewater, and sanitation services, which will be the case before this site is developed. And Policy Seven, which directs light industrial uses to be located within one mile of a limited-access highway interchange. It also serves Goal Two, Objective B, to locate employment uses in such a manner that conflicts with residential land uses are minimized. Specifically, Policy Three, which states that truck and automobile traffic generated by employment uses should not travel through residential areas. In this case, the travel would be on Cleveland or Bittersweet. Additionally, if you look at the two thousand and two comprehensive plan, it doesn't contemplate any specific land uses in this area. However, if you look at the two thousand and three Capitol Avenue plan, the area north of Cleveland Road is slated for industrial development via master-planned corporate parks, and such should be light industrial with no visible outdoor storage, which would be consistent with what is being proposed with this data center use. Turning to the current conditions and character, the area south of the Toll Road and north of Douglas, immediately east of Capitol, has long been used for agricultural uses. However, residential development both north of the Toll Road and then further south, as well as expansion of Mishawaka to the east, and heavy transit between Elkhart and Mishawaka and South Bend have likely diminished the agricultural value of the area based on the traffic generated and how that could hamper safe transportation of farm vehicles. Looking at the most desirable use for the property, it was found that given the future availability of sewer and water, which is limited in the unincorporated county, as well as proximity to major arterial roads and the Indiana Toll Road, that industrial development is the most desirable use for this property. Terms of conservation of property values, there are really not any residential uses within the immediate area beyond the one across Current Road. Everything else is north of the Toll Road or with frontage on Douglas, but mostly even further south than that. Additionally, the use limitations will help to diminish the impact on residential property values. And it's- And it's not anticipated that the industrial development will impact the agricultural value in the area. Finally, it's found that it's reasonable development and growth to allow for industrial development in an area that's going to be served by municipal sewer and water and on major street thoroughfares. And once again, if additional transportation improvements are found to be needed, those will be informed by the traffic study and then those will be required. So once again, comes to you with a favorable recommendation, six, two, subject to these written commitments. If there's anything I can answer for you, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council for area plan?
Mr. Root.
Mr. Thomas.
I don't know if it's for you or Mr. Dance about the traffic study on NDOT, Sean. Is this for, is that for you?
I, I can start. So it would be per the, the county engineer in this case, because it's not NDOT's right of way they'd be accessing. So yeah, it would be the engineer that would require it to just show what sort of additional traffic would be generated by this use and inform any improvements we might need to be, to require as a result.
So they're going to have to get permission, they're going to have to do the whole NDOT study and get passed from the state, correct?
It's not accessing a state right of way. Mr. Dance might have a better idea of what a local traffic study looks like comparative to a state one, so I'll let him speak to that.
Any further council questions for area plan?
Yes, I have a question. Sean, I was out there Saturday morning driving through this area and then I saw in Cleveland, they're doing some work now, there's one lane. Do you know what that is? Do you have any idea? Maybe someone else in here could tell me.
I know it's not related to this.
I actually can answer that question. It's a, it's a gas line.
That's correct, yes.
The work is pretty much finished.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other further council questions for area plan? Hearing the petitioner.
Mr. Root, sorry. Mr. Root, sorry about that. I don't know who to ask, if I should ask Mr. Dance or Sean. Written commitments about the other 900 acres. What do you, it's 900 acres. What is being planned for the project? How much is that going to be used? How much is not going to be used? Can you get into details on that?
I cannot, but. Yeah, we can't speak to that.
Can you hold your question till we're ready for Mr. Dance?
Yeah, okay, that's fine. That's okay.
Petitioner, please state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the council.
That's great. Thank you very much. Mike Dance from Dance Hardin and Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioner. Sean went over everything pretty well. Mainly what we're trying to do here is to rezone from ag and PUD to the industrial district that you see before you, approximately 900 acres. Real fast, the commitments would cover the entire 900 acres if it gets approved. The rezoning is to allow for industrial use and mainly what it's to do is for high tech uses. In this particular part, what we're asking for is that data center, which would be up at that northeast corner. It would probably take maybe about 20 or 30 acres minimal, and this is that phase one of what we have been talking about.
Can you speak into the mic a little louder, please? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know if you can. Can you hear me? Okay, okay. All right. And, and the, the, the potential use is at the northeast corner of the center that we're talking about. As Sean had mentioned, this first part where you see the three buildings, that covers approximately 1.1 million square feet of use, which will be the data center and also office use as well. The area around the building that you see there, that would be for parking. The building themselves would be back over 300 feet. I know that when you're looking at the scale of this particular drawing, that it looks like those buildings relatively close to the edge of the property, but those are set back over 300 feet from any property line that you see there. Access would be from Cleveland Road and one access point onto Bittersweet. They would have to have that approved by the county engineering department. What they take a look at, there's a minimum where the openings can be on Cleveland Road from that roundabout. Sky has already taken a look at the preliminary plan. The one access point onto Bittersweet, if you're familiar with where that solar array is, is that same point. There's only one driveway opening onto Bittersweet. But it's at a point that's far enough away from the top of the bridge for site distance and site safety based on the miles per hour for Bittersweet Road. So the county engineer will have all approvals. This will hook up to city water and sewer. There has been discussions with Mishawaka. Mishawaka can get the water and sewer out there as I had mentioned before. Any kind of extension of utilities would be at the developer's expense for what it takes to service this particular development. So those do come from Veterans Parkway, which is just north of Douglas Road, which is probably about maybe a mile and a half from the site or so. So those would be done. That engineering for that work would be done assuming that this project does receive approval. The other portions, real fast, the commitments that go with this particular project that Sean had mentioned is one where you were talking about the traffic impact study. That is particularly for county engineering, so they will dictate exactly what happens. And it is pretty extensive that they would get into, so it looks at not only the driveways on Bittersweet Road, but also on Cleveland Road. But it will also take a look at any impact that it may have all the way over to the intersection of the bypass and Cleveland Road at that particular intersection to see if those lanes would have to be expanded and queuing areas would have to be added. Any driveways that would be along Cleveland Road, if there's what we call a de-acceleration lane or passing blister, that would be up to the county engineer. Again, those, all those improvements would be required by the developer for that. The other commitment that we were doing was along the creek. That's a major issue with this particular project. Right now, what's happening there is the farm fields are being plowed right up to the top of the bank. And so one of the issues with water quality in Judy Creek is, is that the nitrates and siltation is happening along that entire corridor. As part of this commitment for rezoning the entire acreage, the commitment would require us to do a vegetative buffer along that entire corridor for Judy Creek. What that will do is hopefully eliminate any siltation directly into the creek and also stop any of the nitrates that would get into that area. The proposed buyer for the property would also do a management for that entire area to keep invasive species out of that location, because that's also very important when you're doing anything along the Judy Creek corridor area, so they will be doing that as well. The existing wells on the farm site will be closed down, so those will be capped. That will probably save, I just did a rough calculation for the five wells that are there right now. So on any given day, there's probably pump out about two and a half million gallons of water for the irrigation for those farm fields. That would go away so that the aquifer would not be tapped for those two and a half million gallons. The water would come strictly from Mishawaka. That's an aquifer. It's called a Saint Joe Aquifer. There's a clay cap between the aquifers for Saint Joe there and also for the ones that are in Harris Township. So if there was a concern about the wells drying up in Harris Township, that wouldn't happen because the well that Mishawaka is doing is deeper and the water is coming from that particular location of the aquifer itself, so I wanted you to be aware of that. Any noise conditions is very important. What we had mentioned before is that if this particular facility had any kind of generators, the type of facility this is now, the generators are inside, so any noise consideration is basically muffled because it's indoors. Those generators are not outside toward any area where the residential is located. So the decibel readings have to meet all the county requirements as well. The vibrations, again, when they do the generators, they put those on basically I-beams and they have shock absorbers to keep all the vibration down to a minimum, so there wouldn't be any vibration into any residential area. The lighting has to meet all the county requirements, so the size of the standards, the size of the wattage that are used in any lighting for this particular facility has to be fully shielded so that there is no light spillage onto any adjacent properties. So those are the main parts that we would do. The, the other commitment is, is the uses that we are doing here. What we tried to take a look at were the intense uses. We worked with the plan commission staff to do the commitment to eliminate any possible industrial uses that would have a high impact in this particular area. And if this is approved, that would be a commitment that would go with this particular project for the entire acreage of the site. Anything that would happen along the corridor or any of the floodplain or flood fringe areas have to meet both the state and federal guidelines for any kind of use. So you have to jump through a bunch of hoops in order to develop anything which is in that area, which is very important, so people don't think that somehow magically there's going to be buildings that are located right on top of where Judy Creek is. The reason for the future development, there are potential some areas that are on the south side of Cleveland Road that could be used for building purposes, so that's why we're showing this as basically phase one of the development.
Such as what?
Well, it would most likely be something similar to high tech that, that could be a use for a data center or something close to that. Again, because we're limiting the types of industrial uses there, you would be assured of, that there's nothing that's going to have a high impact for that location. But again, it still has to meet all the requirements. The commitments would all be in place as well to allow for assurances for the type of development that occurs on the property. And if you have any other questions for me, I can certainly answer.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner?
Mr. Root.
Mr. Drake.
So how many acres in total are you looking at for this particular data center?
Well, the, the entire area, obviously all 900 acres, but the first, first phase is probably around 30, 40 acres. All 200, 400 acres. Probably about 100, 200 acres is that. You're seeing the, just the first part of that phase development right now.
So between 100 and 200?
Yeah. Plus the substation as well, so you've got to keep all that in mind. So you have the, the building area, you have the substation areas, you also have the retention areas as well that handle the drainage for any onsite drainage.
If you incorporate that, then what do you think with the substation and the drainage areas?
Yeah.
I mean, how much?
So probably maybe about 150, 200 acres.
So total?
Total.
Including the substation, including the ponds, including the buildings?
Yeah, would be 200. No, more than that?
Angela Smith, Dance Hardin Associates offices located at 1643 Commerce Drive. I can tell you that when we did the subdivision for the northwest corner of this property, it was about, that was about 200 acres. So what we're looking at here is somewhere in the range of 400 to 600 acres total for this first phase. There are also requirements for several of these things where they have to meet certain spacing requirements and certain security issues that require additional land to provide those buffers, security, and spacing. So it's, it's kind of hard to quantify what's built versus what's needed.
Right.
So, so, sorry, so for this first phase, then it's up to 600 acres?
I would think that that would incorporate most of what's north of Cleveland Road, yes.
And then how, with, with, you're talking about another data center possibly on the other 300 acres? Is that some, I mean, is that, how, where are you with that and how, how, how sure are you that that's going to be it or not?
So right now, it's really hard to plan the number of buildings until they can fully get to the site. What basically dictates how many buildings and where they are placed is where the electric and water availability is. So they can't put anything more on the site than the utilities can handle. But they haven't been able to fully vet that because they don't own the land and they can't do the full studies. And if anybody here has worked with AEP, those things kind of take a while. They have been working on investigating the site for well over a year and they have full teams that are working on those. But that's, it, it's not an overnight process. We're continuing to work with Mishawaka, AEP, to make sure that we have all of those answers. But the, they have not started full development of the site. Upon a favorable rezoning, they're prepared to start, they're prepared to close the property this week and start design as early as Monday.
So when you're talking about, I guess, phase one and phase two, then, is it, do you anticipate it's the same company that will develop all areas?
The same company will own all of this property and they will retain all of this property. There is no intent to sell or give or sublease any of this. It would be, they would keep all 900 acres. That's what's being sold to them as one parcel, which is why they have to zone the whole thing. They don't want to own 900 acres and not know what they can do with the other half of it if they need to expand. Thank you.
Can I follow up on that, please, President Root? So all of it then would be high tech, no tech manufacturing, correct?
All of it would be for the data center.
Yes.
Further council questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Root.
Mr. Thomas.
Do you have anything delineated on what you're absolutely not going to use, like how many acres between wetland and the, runoff pond, et cetera?
Well, I can tell you from just what you're seeing for the corridor area. The amount that we're doing the vegetative buffer in is over 40 acres that would remain basically unusable for that portion. And that's for the protection of Judy Creek, for that.
How much?
40 acres.
40 acres?
Yeah. And, and what also happens when you're taking a look at this particular one, you see these other ditches that run through the property. Those have some wetlands areas in them or wetland plants is what we call, so they would main those corridors as well. And since you're taking a look at 900 acres, you can see how long those ditch areas are. So those, that would add additional acreage to that. There may be portions of the site that we talk about, but again, because the studies haven't been fully done for this particular project, they may find that there will be some areas that you will not have to be able to put buildings on, but that's almost going to be dictated by the studies that get done and by the engineering studies that they have. So that would be also where the restrictions are going to come in on this particular development. So you're not going to see 100% of the site ending up being in buildings. That's not what's going to occur here. So there will be a lot of land that, that will be left over, but we still have to have that for drainage issues and for that natural vegetation.
Through the subdivision process, we also just dedicated about seven acres, seven to eight acres that was just right of way for current road. And that hasn't even incorporated the dedications for any of the other roads. Technically, most of these property lines go to the center line of the road, even though there's a right of way easement over them. So as part of this process, they'll be, we're looking at officially dedicating those and giving additional right of way to the county as needed.
You've mentioned on the water issue, you said five wells will be capped. Two and a half million gallons will not be taken from the aquifer. Is that on a daily basis during the heat of the summer?
That's on a daily basis with the calculation and with the amount of gallons per minute that would be done. You're assuming a farmer would water for six hours a day. So that's how many per day it is. And then if, if they do it for 60 days or whatever, because depending on the conditions for the, the land that's out there. On the north side of the site, you have more of the gravel soils. You have tiner, what we call ostamo soil. Those dry out faster, so there's a tendency that you would have to water more in those particular areas. As you get on the south side where the creek is, you get into the more what we call organic soils. That's where that high water table is located as well. So this is taking into account where they would be doing that watering. But that, that's a rough estimate based on what I've been told.
Okay. And President Root, I know Mr. Tanner did some research on the water issue and I think it's really relevant information. If I could ask, Mr. Tanner, would you speak to that, please?
Mr. Tanner is willing to.
I'm willing to, but if I may, I would probably butcher anything that Ken Prince might be able to inform us on purely based off of my recollection and some news reporting that I referred back to my time on the Mishawaka City Council. If it would preclude the president that we could call Mr. Ken Prince up upon his willingness to respond?
Sure, he'll come up here.
So even though Mr. Shetzel put me on the spot, Ken, I, I could certainly speak to this from my memory with regard to the pumping and quality studies that were performed at Judy Creek wellfield and the clay cap separation between the aquifers, but if you wouldn't mind clarifying that?
Yes, thank you. Ken Prince, I'm the director of planning and community development for the city of Mishawaka. I also serve as president of the Board of Works and Utility Board. I am familiar with the water and sewer operations of the city. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Regarding the water, and I would like to come back up later just to talk about the project in general, but specifically about the water. So the Judy Creek wellfield has been in the planning mode for roughly 10 years. In that period of time, we had to initially evaluate the aquifer. We very specifically had consulting engineers. We spent millions of dollars drilling wells, pumping the wells, and then mapping what the impact was to the aquifer. So if you could imagine, unlike the agricultural wells, which you get a permit through the county board of health, we are permitted by IDAM and have to County Board of Health, we are permitted by IDAM and have to go through a very rigorous mapping of what can be yielded based on the recharge of the aquifer. So if you can imagine, when you pull water out of the aquifer, water is also going in the ground, they're very careful in terms of allowing you only to pull out what is then going back into the ground. So looking at the Judy Creek well field, as Councilman Tanner had indicated, it is rated currently at eight and a half million gallons based on what just went online. So eight and a half million gallons a day, and a little over half of that is going to serve existing capacity in the city. So we are in the process, once this is completely up and operational within the next year, we'll be shutting down the Gumwood well field located just off Gumwood Road by Grand View where the water tower went in. That well field goes offline. This well field was designed to serve the city for the next 100 years in terms of growth. So the millions of gallons, what Mr. Majewski, who is our Water Division Director, has indicated, is with the capacity that we have now online, serving the existing city and serving the potential development, we have the capacity to serve it. In addition to that, for future growth needs, this well field has the capacity by adding two wells. So it's not just one well that we have at the well field, it's a series of wells. So if one well goes down and needs to be worked on, there's redundancy to continue to provide municipal water. So with the addition of two additional wells, we can automatically increase that capacity of the well field to 12 million gallons. Even though it's not even needed for the proposed data center, we have the ability to do that. And then above and beyond that, if we were to add an additional filtration system to that well field, we can go as high as 16 million gallons a day coming out of that well field to serve future growth. And keep in mind that the future growth of this area back in 2003, when we jointly did the Capitol Avenue Land Use Plan that staff had indicated, we have been making utility improvements with the intent of serving this area. So that was jointly done and jointly planned because very specifically, you look at, every community has poor planning examples. So we've dealt with Grape Road. It's very expensive to fix things once they've gone wrong. Mr. Tanner knows that very well from his time on the city council. And I would use downtown Granger in terms of the planning of utilities. The county did an excellent job of then after the fact, having the sewer district form an area then to address the businesses that were actually shutting down seating and restaurants because they couldn't have their septic systems serve that, that area. So those are examples. And we knew in 2003, when we approached this, that we had to have the planning done for the corridor. That was why the planning was done and why this area was identified for a mix of tech park, corporate park, retail, residential, but all served in an organized and on public utility manner. So with that, I know there's a ton of questions related to water and sewer. The other thing I want to mention regarding utility planning that I think is very important, the cost was, the issue of cost was brought up of what is this going to cost? And I think the stage of the process is very important to understand. When you have any user coming in, and we've had this happen in the city for various projects, the first thing they ask for is zoning because they don't want to spend the money needed to analyze these systems until they know the zoning is in place. So we've had projects where we've approved zoning, but they come back and they analyze the cost of providing sewer and water, and then they end up not moving forward because the cost is significant. One thing that we do know on this is it's in the tens of millions of dollars to extend water and sewer to this property. How much, we don't know until they actually get into the design, but it's a trunk sewer. Right now, our existing sewer system, there's a lift station, the Daisy Road Lift Station close to Jefferson. Part of the planning of this corridor, more than a decade ago, the city bought an easement from AEP to extend up to Day Road to provide that trunk sewer, and it's going to have to be picked up from there and then carried north in order to serve this, this property. There's also downstream improvements that would have to be done to serve it. So again, we are talking tens of millions of dollars that would have to be borne by the developer in order to get water and sewer to the property. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you, that you might have.
So that cost, just to be clear, none of those costs for the water and sewer would be, not a penny of it is going to be a cost to the taxpayer?
So, Councilman Shetzel, I, again, the city is not in direct conversations, the developer is currently in direct conversations with the county staff. Our, what has been indicated to us is that the developer would pay for the cost associated with the extension of both sewer and water. That's what we've been told, but we have not had those discussions. Thank you.
Mr. Root?
Ms. Drake?
So you said, I don't know if I got it right, but did you say that if you did everything possible, you could supply up to 16 million gallons of water a day? Is that?
That's correct.
Correct? Do you have any idea, because we've heard that these data centers are such big water users, what their anticipated need is, especially if they not only have one data center, but then a second one?
Our understanding of the, and forgive me for saying this, but garden variety data center would be in that million gallon a day range, and the applicant could have more information in that regard. And I think they won't know specifically until they get into that design regarding the actual need.
Thank you.
I will add to that, that a lot of the, the media or rumors and some of this and the millions of gallons of water that are needed, those are for data centers that might be in Arizona or Nevada or some of the other areas where the temperature is not as temperate as here. One of the reasons that this area is attractive for data centers is we don't have super hot, arid community weather all year round. There might be a couple weeks where they have a peak of water usage, but generally over the course of the year, it's not as significant as what's reported in other areas of the country.
So when that water is used, is it circulated or is it used and dumped?
So all of the, I can't speak to the specifics of the circulation within the building. I can say that anything that would be discharged from this would go in the sanitary sewer that would go back to the city of Mishawaka for treatment.
And do they, I know a big kind of controversial issue within data centers is they often do not want to disclose how much water they are using. And is there any plans to track the water usage?
I mean, I think most metering will pretty much track that.
They, they will get a bill every month that they have to pay based on their usage. So, yes.
Good point.
Some of their water is circulated throughout the building. They do try to reuse as much as they can. Sustainability is a huge concern for these kind of companies.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the council for the petitioners?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Dance, we talked about the power usage, and you said you could answer questions on that. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so what we've been told is, is that the contingent purchaser has been working with AEP on this particular project. And what they have found from AEP is, is that if this project were to move forward, as I had mentioned, that there would be that substation on Cleveland Road just south of where the buildings are for the phase one of the project. They, they would have direct power from AEP. They're working right now to figure out what routing they would do. So assuming that we can move to the next step, which would be the engineering phase, they can let the AEP engineers figure out of the two transmission lines that basically bisect the site and run it in a north-south direction, which of those they would be able to tap to bring along Cleveland Road. What the issue right now is they're trying to figure out is, is what the separation has to be for the wires, because those are high voltage transmission lines, so that's got to be engineered. But AEP does have the ability to service this, and they have talked about this particular project with the contingent purchaser. So yes, they, it can be supplied, and it's not coming off, our understanding is not coming off of any circuit that is being basically energized for the Harris Township area. So when we heard about some of the issues that the residents in that particular area were having with brownouts, this would come off of a different circuit, this shouldn't have any impact on that. Doesn't mean that they won't have brownouts, but it just means from, it won't be caused because of this particular project.
But if, if there was so much energy required that the company couldn't supply it, it doesn't really matter where it's coming from, which direction does it?
Well, it, it does from an engineering standpoint. When I've worked with AEP, when we start through a project with them, the, the first thing that they usually will get after the project is approved or the zoning, they work with either the architect or whoever's designed the building or the MEPs, and they come up with the load that needs to be for the particular structure. On data centers like this, they can be scaled up. So in essence, you're, you're not building the entire building at one time. They also take a look at what portion of that building they can build based on the usage of the resources available to them. So when you were talking about water, you're talking about electricity, the people that do the data centers figure out how to engineer the building for what resources they've got available for that project. And that's very important because that way you're not overdeveloping the building if you don't have that resources available. So that's why they try to talk with the utilities ahead of time to make sure that those resources are available, or they can be committed to this particular project. So that, as Ken had mentioned, when they're doing millions of gallons a day in pumping, if they know that the data center is going to use whatever, 500,000 or a million gallons, that they've got that amount already committed. So if anybody else comes in for development, they can take that amount off of it. They, that's very important. That's from a planning standpoint.
I also can confirm that the contingent purchaser has done almost like a worst-case scenario. If we were to build 100% of the site, could AEP handle this? And AEP said, even if you were to build 100% of the site, we could handle your power needs.
Is any of that, another concern with these data centers is that a lot of rate payers think that they're going to end up bearing the burden of some of the costs with new transmission lines or whatever you need to build it in terms of infrastructure. What about that issue?
Similar to the extension of water and sewer, that's, that cost is the responsibility of the developer. There, that's why they're putting a substation on this property. That's already planned and accommodated in their design and cost estimates.
I can tell you from an engineering standpoint, the AEP wants their money, a lot of it upfront also, before they start getting in. The AEP actually asked for money upfront when they start getting into the engineering. Yeah, yeah. You know, that's exactly it. So they, they work closely with the engineers with AEP. And I found that, that that has worked even on small projects. And it's just because of the timeline to be able to get resources to a particular project. Even when I'm working on smaller projects right now, we, we have had issues where it would take almost a year to be able to get the transformers or whatever else we need to supply power to buildings. So in a particular case like this, where you're talking about a million square feet, they need to know that upfront to be able to plan ahead for what kind of infrastructure they've got to put in place.
What about monitoring wells? You're, you're capping the irrigation wells for the farms. Are you, have, they're going to have monitoring wells around the creek, on Judy Creek?
There wouldn't be any monitoring wells along for, what, for any kind of contamination control.
Yeah, anything, anything alike.
Unless there would be something that comes up particularly, if there was something that showed up on maybe an Indiana classification chart or something that said that there might be a contamination plume or something like that. But no, there, you don't need to do any kind of monitoring wells unless there is some kind of issue or spillage. And usually with a data center for something like this, that doesn't occur. One of the things I just wanted to bring up, because I know that some of the residents had a concern, it's like, okay, that's great, you're hooking up the, the data center to the sanitary sewer line, what chemicals are going out of that building and going to the city of Mishawaka, and what kind of pretreatment is happening and what kind of treatment needs to be done? When I had talked with the Mishawaka, the engineering department there, the actual issue with the data center is, is that the water that's coming back to them is clean. And that's an issue when it gets to the sewer treatment plant because they have to address their treatment plant because basically sewage is broken down biologically. And if you just put clean water back into it, that can kill off that biological portion of the treatment. So when a data center or something like this comes online, Mishawaka has to take that into account to make sure they still balance their sewage treatment plan. And they would actually go out and look for some additional users to be able to, to bring the right kind of sewage back to the treatment plant.
What about your, what about, sorry?
Nope.
If anyone else has a question, I'm hogging all the time here. I don't know if this is for you, from Mr. Klein, annexation. Can you, can anybody talk about annexation? Does Mishawaka have, I mean, look?
Well, for, just to go over annexation real fast, what ends up happening by state law is, is that you end up doing voluntary annexations. Involuntary annexations do not happen. They probably haven't happened for 20 or 30 years because they're too complicated to do and people can go to court. This particular site has one point of contiguous right now. That's one point. That's not even something that you can measure from a standpoint of Mishawaka. In order to take this in, you have to have what we call a 12 and a half percent contiguous. So in order to take this property in, it would have to go in in phases, even if they could do that.
So it doesn't meet the criteria right now?
It does not meet the criteria right now. And what we had said before to some of the residents as well, at least in presentations that I had given, anywhere along here, there are places where there would be maybe four or five property owners that you would have to basically agree to bring into the city of Mishawaka. The other part is that the city of Mishawaka would have to agree to also taking them in. Because when you do an annexation, there's a report that gets done for councils that says, okay, how much is it going to cost for us to take those particular pieces of property? And how much is it going to cost for fire protection? How much is it going to cost for police protection? What do we have to put into it water sewer-wise? And what are we getting out of it? So that, those are the things that have to be into account. That's why you're not going to see, even if Mishawaka were able to get this site in over whatever huge period of time, they're not going to go grab residential uses either because it doesn't really pay. If you have to provide services as you take in annexed areas with water or sewer, that gets very expensive. And all my conversations with Mishawaka about taking any existing residential areas in, they don't want to do that. Because in order to do that, they would have to supply water sewer to those areas. That means they would either have to rip up streets to be able to put the sewers in. And what I've been told is, is that the cost, the return that they get for sewage or for the bills is not worth what it costs to put the infrastructure in place.
What about, I'm sorry, again, I've got this issue going out in my district a lot.
That's okay, go ahead.
A fire study. This is going to require, this is specialized, and this is very unique, these buildings, and this is what I'm dealing with in my district. Can you, can you expound on that?
I can do the best I can. So when I'm dealing with these.
In other words, we have enough fire department to handle this? And are they, are they going to be up to speed?
So usually there's, and if there's a fireman here or whatever, they can probably explain maybe this better. But what ends up happening is, is there are basically agreements with, between the county and the cities for whatever, if there's fire required. But for things like this, the, when they do the buildings and get them, go through the process of getting a building permit, they have to show the type of fire protection suppression systems that they would be using for these buildings. And for a building like this, they would definitely have a fire suppression system. The things that we also take a look at, and as Ken had mentioned, is when you start running water and sewer to a particular site, and you're going to provide fire protection, that either means fire hydrants onsite to be able to also put out any fires or whatever. But the other big thing that a developer usually ends up having to pay for is what we call making sure that the pressure is high enough on that line as well. And one of the biggest issues is pressure on a water line to make sure that you can provide fire protection. Because when we do a suppression system, that takes a certain size water line to be able to protect a building, but you need to have another basically sized water line under pressure for any outside fire hydrants that the fire department would hook up with. And I know that the Harris Township territorial area, they, they would want to try to work with Mishawaka on this particular part too, so that they're not the only ones that would respond, and they wouldn't. But that would be the issue is what happens.
The buildings would be, the buildings would be fully fire suppression inside the building, so they have their own fire suppression system. They're also heavily monitored in terms of temperature and everything. So as you can imagine, it's horrible for the user if they start having fires in their server. So they monitor these things very closely. They have state-of-the-art fire suppression systems within the building, and they pay very close attention to that. So it's a very important issue for them as well.
Thank you.
Sir, what would you have to say about a lot of comments on the loss of prime agriculture?
So, yeah, there, so there were questions about that. I know that some of the people were concerned about the type of land that is out there right now. From the north to south part of this property, up by the toll road, there, there's basically what we call, I'm, I'll try not to, I'll do it real fast, but there's different kind of soil types that we have in St. Joe County. There's about 72 different types of soil. And toward that north portion where the buildings are going in, that's why one of the areas they picked for this first phase is because that's the gravel soils that are there. The water table is way down in the ground, so you can build there without any major issues. But with those gravel soils. But with those gravel type of soils, the, you have erosion problems with the topsoil because it gravel, and when you have the wind blow, it has a tendency to get rid of your, your topsoil. So from an agricultural standpoint, if I'm getting rid of my topsoil because of certain conditions, if I don't resupply that topsoil, it's costing me money. My plants that are there are not going to do as well. My yield is going to go down. And what I can plant is going to start probably getting narrower for the types of plants that go on. On the other portions of the site where we have a high water table, which is probably closer to Judy Creek and some of the areas, down by Cleveland Road, you have a high water table. The other issue there is, is that when you put plants in, that sounds great. But if the plants are sitting in water all the time, my yield will again, will go down because the plants suffer because they can't just be in water being in constant period. What also happens is that the different types of soils that you have on a site, depending on the depth that you go down to, the pH level in those soils change. When you're doing farming, you're trying to make sure that if you're putting fertilizers and nitrates on the ground, that you're actually getting absorbed by the plant itself. Well, if the pH is too high, that doesn't happen. So again, you have a problem with your plants, your yield goes down. So that's some of the issues. And one of the things that was happening here was, is that the farmer was spending more on fertilizers to try to overcome the natural areas there that you're having problems with. And when you put more fertilizers on, then we ran into the second issue that I talked about, which is now I'm getting nitrates and other things into the creek. And that causes a problem with the water quality for Judy Creek. So that was one of the reasons that we were doing the vegetative buffer, to be able to try to stop that. Because remember, there are other ditches that are coming through this property that are going down to Judy Creek. So by us doing vegetative buffers throughout this site, we can try to slow that down so that those nitrates don't get to the creek, whether it was happening to us or because it was coming from other properties off-site. Because the ditches basically kind of interconnect out in these areas.
Okay, thank you.
Any further council questions for the petitioners? Going once, going twice? No?
Okay.
Let me just ask what the council's prerogative is at this point. Would you like to take a break or did you like to keep going at this point? Counsel will be in recess until 8:25.